I'd like to thank you all for being here. My name is Ed Masterson. I'll be serving as the moderator for tonight's event. And I want to give a special thank you right off the bat to College of the Canyons, of course, for serving as our venue. And also the COC Audio and Technology Department, Leslie Carr, Joe Lantier, and we have Connor McKinnon here tonight helping the sound with the microphones and the sound in the room. So, thank you Connor for being here, we appreciate that. Also, a very nice thank you to Jersey Mike Subs, Kiana Isaacson here in Santa Clarita provided all the food this evening, they're so generous all the time. And a special thank you to all of our candidates who are joining us here this evening. We want to thank all of you for your desire to serve our community. So, thank you all for being here. Let me go over sort of the rules or the guidelines for tonight's event. Tonight's event is a forum, it's not a debate format, it is a forum question and answer format. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement. Each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. Each candidate will have a minute and a half, 90 seconds, to answer each question. And each candidate will answer each question. So, nobody's going to miss being able to answer the questions. Everybody gets a chance to answer the same questions. And in an effort to make tonight's event a very respectful and friendly environment for everybody in attendance and those participating as candidates, if you could all please adhere to the following rules during our question and answer session, we'd appreciate it so much. So, if you would please not address or make remarks toward other candidates that are up here at the tables. If you would please not comment or make remarks regarding answers provided by other candidates here this evening. And please do not comment or make remarks regarding comments which may have been made by other candidates prior to tonight's event. That would be much appreciated as well. I want to keep this as friendly and respectful as possible. Tonight's event is an opportunity for our audience members to hear your answers and viewpoints regarding the questions that we'll be asking. So, thank you all for your kindness and generosity in adhering to those rules tonight. And I'll be keeping time for opening statements, closing statements, answers to the questions, so I know that makes me the bad guy, but having to keep an eye on the time. When you hear me say "thank you," that will be your indicator that time has expired for that particular statement or answer. And if you would please conclude your remarks on time, that would be greatly appreciated. And with that, we're going to go ahead and begin. What I'm going to do is hand this wireless microphone down here, starting with Mr. Baralavi. And if each of you, when you're done with your opening statement, if you please pass it to the next candidate, that would be great. We can get the timer set up here. So, we have one minute for the opening statements. Mr. Baralavi, you can start us off. There you go, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I usually don't talk into a mic because I'm already projecting pretty well. But thank you everyone for inviting me, it's much appreciated, especially in light of the fact that your competing business association in town, whose name will not be mentioned, has decided not to invite me to the candidate forum next month, which is quite unusual to me. I'm an elected official and I don't understand why they decided not to have me at their forum next month. But that is what it is. I thought, you know, we were hoping this could be a nonpartisan race and it seems like they've excluded people and made it seem, at least, partisan. I am really enjoying running for city council. I ran for school board in 2018 and had a very fun, friendly, exciting campaign.
David, excuse me. Thank you. So, you know what? I'm making a command decision. We're going to do two-minute opening statements. So, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I can tell I've got to go a long time. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Okay, so, do I get to start over? Thank you everyone for inviting me here today.
I'm going to start you now on your second minute and then I'll tell you when else.
You know, this isn't really fair because I'm not, I wasn't prepared to be stopped in my conscience. Anyways, let me tell you a little bit about my qualifications. I graduated from UCLA with a degree in physics and a degree in women's studies. I was the first male women's studies graduate from UCLA. I like to think of myself as a very logical, rational, reasonable, science-based thinker and that's what I would like to bring to our city council. I'm also a tax and trust attorney practicing here in Santa Clarita with a small business firm. And again, I think I can bring a lot of qualities to the city council as such and feel quite qualified for that. I'm a husband, I'm a father, and I'm a grandfather and I'm, pretty much, all my kids were mostly raised in Santa Clarita, so I'm very, very happy about that. I coached hundreds of kids in Santa Clarita through years in all kinds of sports. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that very much. Our next candidate?
Thank you. Thank you everyone for being here. My name is Cody Amor and I am a homeless resident at the only shelter in Santa Clarita. For a lot of you, this will be the first time you are hearing the perspective of a homeless resident who lives here in Santa Clarita. My top priority is solving homelessness. I have many plans addressed to, designed to address this multifaceted issue and a plan to pay for it. But before I get into the details, just wanted to disclose like who I am, where I came from. I studied math, I got my degree in mathematics. I taught at Arizona State University, I taught at Arizona Christian University, and I love mathematics. I moved here three years ago and I wanted to study math. That was my main avocation and it's been my main avocation ever since. It's how I identify as myself. And since then, I became homeless. And as I'm homeless, I'm studying math, I'm still doing the thing I love to do. But it's given me a very interesting perspective being a homeless mathematician. So, every year, $8 million of your local taxes is funneled to Los Angeles County so that the county can solve homelessness. Homelessness is getting much worse, as many of you all witnessed. The problem isn't that we are spent, but that we're not spending enough. The problem is the money's not going to the right places. So, we have, you know, money going to the county and then the county pays for loss, they'll pay for LA Public Health Department to regulate our homeless shelter, which we only have one. And that $8 million doesn't come back to us in the way that I would like to see it come back to us. Our shelter is underfunded, there's still only 60 emergency shelter beds. And so, you see homeless residents walking around the streets, you should know why that is. It's because we don't have enough shelter beds. And so, we need more shelters, we need more emergency shelter beds, we need to house residents. And I think we need to open up the hotel rooms to homeless residents after like maybe 9:00 PM. I think we need to, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Ms. McLean?
Hi, good evening. My name is Marcia McLean. And for those, a lot of you know my background, but for those of you who don't, I started my career working for the Los Angeles Police Department as a civilian. I then worked for a city councilman at LA City Hall. And then I worked for the federal government, the State Department. And I was assigned to the American Embassy in Paris, France, and then for a short time at the American Embassy in Tel Aviv, Israel. So, that gives me a really good background and knowledge of government. I met my husband in Paris and we were married in New York and drove cross-country because we wanted to live here in California and start our family here. I am a, you're a full-time councilwoman. I devote necessary time to do the job that needs to be done. I serve on regional boards like councils of governments, of which I am the chair of the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments, JPAs and coalitions that focus on areas that we need to focus on, like transportation, public safety, law enforcement. And that gives me the ability to bring the dollars that we need here in Santa Clarita to make sure we have public safety programs and education programs and enough money for our roads and enough money for the kinds of programs that we want to have here in Santa Clarita. I am, when we open, I'm a business owner. My husband and I own a business for many, many years and we understand the need to belong to the business associations here in Santa Clarita in order to grow our business. Small business and our businesses are what is vital to Santa Clarita to make sure we have a really strong and viable economic vitality.
Thank you, Ms. McLean, appreciate it. Mr. Miranda?
Thank you, thank you for having me. I'm an inner-city boy from Harlem in New York City. I left Harlem and spent seven years in the military. So, I'm a military guy, left the military, joined the corporate world, spent 15 years in the corporate world, started with IBM, went through Xerox, three Fortune 500 companies. And I ended up as an executive, vice president in charge of all our operations in Europe. I was headquartered in Paris as you were, Marcia. We came back and when we came back to Los Angeles, my family decided we wanted a great place to live, work and raise a family. And there was this ad in the LA Times that said, "Come home to Valencia." And I had to check it out. So, we came home to Valencia. I got to tell you, Valencia kind of ended at Valencia Boulevard at that time. But we had, we had kind of a map of what Valencia and Santa Clarita was going to become. We have a great city. We have one of the most abhorred cities in the country. That doesn't happen by itself. That happens because we have a great staff and we have a great council that works hard for the citizens of our community. I am very proud that over the last almost six years, I've represented Santa Clarita. I've represented all of Santa Clarita. We have a community center in Canyon Country. I don't live in Canyon Country, but I represent Canyon Country. We have an ice cube, a cube over in northern Valencia if you will. I'm in south Valencia. I don't represent northern Valencia, but I guess I do, I represent all of Valencia. We have Old Town New Hall and we've reestablished some wonderful things in Old Town New Hall. I don't live in Old Town New Hall, but I represent everybody in the community. I'm not looking to dissect the community.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda.
I'm looking to join the community together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Light?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. My name is Denise Light. I've been a resident for 13 years in the city of Santa Clarita. I'm a wife, a mom, a business owner, a lawyer, and most importantly, I love Santa Clarita. I'm running for several reasons. Number one, I want to expand on the foundation that has been built for our city by its prior leaders. I want to empower our business communities, our business organizations with VIA, The Chamber and the Economic Development Corporation to continue to advocate for our businesses here and to empower them. I'm running because I firmly believe that Santa Clarita is a wonderful place to live. We all live here for a reason. My priorities include law enforcement, public safety and infrastructure, community building with partnerships, and finally, growing a community that we can all be involved in. I can guarantee you that nobody will work harder than me. My father always told me to be the best at what you do, you have to be prepared. Nobody will outwork me and I look forward to working for all of you in all of the communities in Santa Clarita. Thank you.
Thank you. Check this mic. Madam?
Hello, hello. Oh, yes, please.
This one here, mine's working. It's a wonderful. Ms. West, your turn, use this one for two minutes, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here, proud to serve Santa Clarita and it's a blessing you're here. I wanted to say that you live in one of the best communities in the United States. It's been a lot of work, it's been a lot about partnerships. Santa Clarita is a city that partners. We run more like a business, like a corporation than like a governmental agency. We are attributed to being the best of the best. We take care of our kids, our seniors, our veterans. We're working on the homeless shelter, we've bought a million-dollar piece of land, we have $2 million we put into it and we should have the schedule in a few days for when it will ground base and start being built. And I'm very proud of that effort. I have worked on our open space, which is now over 13,000 acres and did the initiative for it in 2007. We didn't want to be urban sprawled into the next city and the next city and next city. We wanted to be an individual hometown community, which we are. We're the best trails in the United States. We take care of our kids with sports and they are competing at the highest level nationally. It doesn't get much better than that. I do have concern about the attack on us with fentanyl, which is sweeping across the United States. And I am bound and determined to tell every single parent, you need to know what that word is. It's not just a drug, it's death. And if you get too much of it, like two grains that you can't see, you die. So, remember that word, look it up. Let us work together, let us keep what we have, let us keep law enforcement strong. Public safety, the highest, most important thing in this community is public safety. If you're not safe, your business can't survive, you're not going to be able to do your job, you're not going to be able to stop worrying about your children. So, let's take care of that. We've got a new shared station, we just need to keep it full.
Thank you. This one last. Ms. Thomas?
Good evening, Valley Industry Association attendees, my fellow candidates. Thank you for allowing me to participate in this candidate forum. I'd like to share my story, my journey that led me to be a resident of Santa Clarita for 12 years. In 2010, recently divorced, I was suddenly a single mother of three small girls. I was in search of a safe community with great schools and opportunities. From that, 75 miles away in Bakersfield where I lived, I found Santa Clarita. In 2014, I started my own company, Six Degrees HR Consulting, right out of Starbucks on Seco Canyon in Copper Hill. By 2019, I had an amazing book of business, a staple businesses in our community, La Costina, Roland Heating and Air, Albright Peony. And then by 2020, COVID struck, right after I shot my Shark Tank audition to franchise my company. I had to act, I had to lead, I made myself essential. I had to help the businesses of Santa Clarita in this COVID crisis. And from that, I gained a desire to serve our community, not just our businesses, but the people. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Douglas Fraser. I'm a Canyon Country resident for the last 27 years. Thank you to the Valley Industry Association for this forum. I grew up in Florida and I came out here in 1991. Got a four-year degree from the University of Florida before I left. So, when I got here, I found a job with LA County and now I'm retired from that job, so I have plenty of free time to work with the city. I'm on the Canyon Country Advisory Committee Board, an active member now. We meet months once a month. My experience with the city is in the Communication Community Development Department. I was on the rent adjustment panel and I was the chairperson for the last three years of the panel. We were able to update the code, a municipal code in the city, 6.02, that's the rent adjustment procedures. And we were able to bring them up to modern age. They were developed in 87 when the city started and we brought them up to the present age. I want to be a person that will allow the communication better between the citizens and the city staff. If you have a problem, I'll be the liaison. I like to work with people and work to work out the problems. So, I'm going to present myself as a person that works with the citizens or the businesses and brings them to the city so that any problem we have, the communication will be better and you'll be able to depend on me to work those problems out. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Malik. I'd like to thank the VIA for having me here. My wife and I moved here about six and a half years ago to Santa Clarita. I work as a chief of staff as one of the largest global recruitment firms in the world in different things, as project management, HR, investor board relations and many other things. So, I am running for a more inclusive, responsive and transparent city of Santa Clarita. This is not about me and it's never going to be. It's about creating a platform for the silence to finally be heard. Now, politicians need to start thinking about community first and stop putting special interests first. I'm not a politician, this is all new to me. I'm an activist, but I realize sitting here, I'm going to be a politician, but at the same time, I'm going to remain an activist. People seem to be a little bit afraid of the word activism. I'm going to be an activist for many issues. I'm running to improve affordable housing, local parks, to protect our environment, small business benefits, youth development, schools, better healthcare, especially mental healthcare, senior services, veteran services, LGBTQIA+ rights, women's rights and equality, and the fight against the rise of white supremacy in our community. Now, I'm going to approach all of those things with the same passion and I'm also going to approach them with common sense. They sort of misnamed common sense, it's not very common. You know, let me just end with one of my favorite quotes from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and that's, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Well done on all the opening statements, we appreciate that. We will start with question number one and I think also, I'm going to bump these up to two-minute response times on these questions because I think that's more appropriate amount of time. I'm going to start, if you don't mind, Mr. Baralavi with you. And I can repeat the question as well because I know by the time we work our way down the table, we might forget what the question was. So, I'm happy to repeat it. But here's our first question of this evening. The homeless population, of course, has become a problem in the greater Los Angeles area. We are seeing an increase of homeless in the Santa Clarita Valley. What are your thoughts on how to manage the homeless population in the Santa Clarita
Firstly, the homeless population are brothers, they're our sisters, they're our parents and they're our children. They are our children and they're our grandchildren. That is the first realization we have to make. When we see someone on the streets, that is our family. And that's how I've always felt about it. So, we have to start with that approach. The next approach is money. We have to bring money into the system because it takes money to help people help themselves, both as far as housing, healthcare and mental health care goes. So, we have to push LA County not only to give us more money, but I have a plan called "A Dollar a Year." Every resident in Santa Clarita will have the opportunity to lock in a dollar a year taken out of their checking account to give us well over $200,000 a year to spend on helping our homeless population. That money, you don't have to give a dollar, you can give $5, you can give $10, but a dollar a year can accumulate millions of dollars through just a few years and then we can make great change for our brothers and sisters who are homeless. The third thing is we have to have good policy people behind this who are not only compassionate but know how to put the money to use, not put the money in the pockets of CEOs who run the companies that help the homeless, but to really put it 100, almost 100% into the services that are required to help our homeless. So, I would say the first, and first step is, it's our perspective on who our homeless are. We have to cry, we have, it has to bring tears to our eyes every time we see a homeless people, person in our presence, because that person is our family. It's our son, it's our daughter, it's our grandson. And from there, the solution.
Thank you, Mr. Baralavi. Mr. Moore, check that microphone, see if it's working.
Hey, everyone. So, homeless shelters, we need more of them, obviously. We need more homeless shelters, we need more emergency shelter beds. It's really unfortunate to see so many elderly veterans sleeping in the streets right now because they can't get a shelter. So, because we have 60 shelter beds, we have so many residents coming into the shelter every single day and the shelter tells them, "Sorry, we're full, you have to leave the city." And it's a way of funneling homeless people to where the county is actually solving homelessness. They're not solving homelessness here, right? When you pay your tax dollars to solve homelessness, it goes to the county. That's the problem. We need to separate ourselves from LA County as much as possible. LA County is run by their Board of Supervisors, which I know you all know is like one of the most corrupt institutions in the world. And so, they have their LA sheriffs, they have their public hospitals, right? We all know the wait times of those. We all, we know the LOSA. Their board members are each making over $120,000 a year, that's where your money's going. And then they, LOSA, tells our shelter what to do. LA Public Health tells us, tells the shelter what to do. That needs to change. We need to, we need to reorganize the budget so that our focus is on solving homelessness. I think one of the biggest things that can solve homelessness is a vacancy tax. So, it's a tax on landlords that fail to utilize their property. So, landlords who have empty properties, which by the way, for commercial spaces, there's 1.3 million square feet of empty commercial space right now. Most of it's offices, most of it's medical offices, most of it's retail. And those, I mean, those industries are not sustainable in the long run anyways. We need to repurpose these empty facilities for things that can benefit us. And a vacancy tax can help with that. If a landlord has a vacant property, then they, and this is the key thing, they have to lower their rent.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, appreciate it. Sorry, I feel bad cutting people off, I really do. I apologize for that, it's just the nature of these things. Ms. McLean?
Yes, hi. The city has formed a homeless ad hoc committee on which I served with Councilwoman Cameron Smythe. And we have formed the community task force consisting of over 30 organizations who have dealt with homelessness separately and didn't know how to get the necessary funds. We take homelessness very seriously here in Santa Clarita and we actually are doing something about it. It's a huge problem and it takes time and money. I chaired the committee on the task force that put together a resource guide, not only for those facing homelessness, but for the community at large. And I have a card here, we put together this card with a QR code, which can be handed out to anyone who needs to report a homeless situation or a homeless person who needs the resources. And this card is available to everyone. And I actually have some copies here if you want. The city has donated over $5,400,000 to do something about the homeless issue to the homeless shelter to make sure it is a year-round shelter that serves everyone, not only those that stay there, but they provide services. We gave money to Family Promise. We absolutely agree that LOSA is not working and our supervisor, Catherine Barker, put forth a motion in order to have an investigation, it's a blue-ribbon task force. I attended every single meeting. They were giving local governments $10 million. I spoke very loudly and strongly that more money needs to come back to local governments who know how to solve the issues. We now are getting over $20 million. So, yes, we understand, I am intimately involved with helping to solve the problem.
Thank you, Ms. McLean, thank you very much. Mr. Miranda?
Yeah, shortly after I joined the council, the county voters passed a measure called Measure H. That was taking a quarter percent of our sales tax and devoting that money strictly to homelessness. In an average year, the city or the county probably collects almost a billion dollars a year to fight homelessness. Now, let me ask a question. Is homelessness better than it was five years ago or is it worse? And the answer is pretty easy. It's worse, it's not only worse, it's a lot worse. So, when Measure H passed, Supervisor Catherine Barker, who by the way, I'm a little bit insulted that anyone would say she's corrupt because she's one of the finest representatives, elected officials I've ever seen. She held a conference of city officials at her office and basically she said, "How do we make Measure H work?" And what we found out is that basically there are three categories for homelessness. There's people... There's people who are addicted, there are people who have PTSD or some other mental problems, and there are people who are just out of luck, temporary situation. The people who are out of luck, we can help immediately. We can help them find jobs, we can give them clothing, we can, you know, give them a place to stay, not only that, but we can really, really retrain them if we have to. The people with mental problems, we have to send to people who are experts in mental problems, which we're not. So that's our job, is to get them help from the people who can help them. Same thing with addiction, get them help. So what's happened, and Marcia touched on it, the money that has gone to LA has been squandered. We don't have a money problem in addressing homelessness. We have a problem in how are we handling that money? And Supervisor Catherine Barker was leading the fight against that.
Thank you, Ms. Light?
You've got one in front of you.
In front of me. Oh, sorry. I thought we were still using the remote.
John Pramick, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm glad Measure H was brought up because, quite frankly, we're not getting our fair share of Measure H funds here in the northern part of the county. We need some stronger advocacy to get our fair share of Measure H funds so that we can use it productively. Homelessness is a multifaceted problem. It is not a problem that you can just throw money out and expect it to go away. People are homeless through no fault of their own, they go through a divorce, they have a catastrophic medical condition, they lose their job, and it's our responsibility as responsible citizens to give them a handout, to lift them up out of their homeless situation. Yes, money does solve some problems, but it's more in depth than that. We have to partner with mental health professionals and mental health organizations to help those homeless people who are suffering with mental health or addiction. We have to partner with families to bring their family member out of homelessness, bring the families into the loop to help their loved ones rise out of homelessness. We have to partner with social workers and job training providers to help give people new skills, maybe for a new job due to the loss of a job. And we have to profit with nonprofit, we have to partner with nonprofit organizations such as Single Mothers Outreach, Bridge to Home, Santa Clarita Groshry. We have to partner with those who can help us fight the problem together. We're all in this together. Nobody wants homeless. I agree. It's terrible that anybody is homeless. It is terrible that we have veterans sitting on our streets, living in squalor, and we can do better, and we should do better by doing all of those things in partnership with other organizations.
Thank you very much. Ms. West, does your microphone work? Can you borrow this one?
Hi, can you hear me? Yep. Right, great. I think Denise Light has something critically critical. There are a lot of reasons for homelessness, and about 40 years ago, California decided to not have mental health facilities. And when they did that, we thought, well, it just wouldn't be a problem. Wouldn't be a problem, but mental health is an extremely difficult thing to deal with. And now you have the influx of drugs. You also have veterans on the street. God bless our veterans. They've saved our country. They need, they need a lot of help, and they need mental care, and they need a lot of things. The one thing we can't do is take people off the streets and get them in a facility till we build the homeless shelter. So as Marcia said, we put our funds together, Catherine Barker put up $2 million, we put up $2 million. These dollars did not come from Measure H, even though they should have, and we took a million dollars of city cash, and we bought the land so we can build the shelter. The building's designed, we should in a few days have the building scheduled, and it's really important we get that done. So I believe that you're right. You've got to get a mental health, we need to do that, and we need to do that statewide. It's going to require pushing the legislature to change their attitude about the health conditions in this state, which are deplorable. And yes, we need to job train, but if you're not mentally okay, you're not going to job train. Got to deal with the drugs, got to deal with their health, and just throwing money isn't going to do it. So we need to work systematically, partner, do the things we need to do. Yeah, LASSA, it'd be nice if you gave us our fair share of money. Santa Clarita's sending out the money, it's not coming back, and that's going to be a battle we're going to have to continue to fight. So we're partnering with our supervisor, we're doing that, we're going to create good facilities, and we're going to help our people.
Thank you, Mayor West. I think I echo the sentiment of my fellow candidates, and I would lighten a little more specificity in my experience as a social worker in Kern County for eight years, specifically working with homeless women and their children. And the wraparound approach that county took was successful, and I think part of the process that I would apply would be, find the collaboratives that are successful, apply them to this community. There obviously, there's nuance that we have specific to us from the demographics that are homeless here versus in other areas, but we can certainly make the adjustment to apply a solution-oriented process. The monies are absolutely the issue. I know for Kern County, there was a huge battle for their fair share, and the council there and the various districts had to fight, and as a city council person, I would take that skill set, and I would do that with the, not only the business act that I have, but the social service activity. Thank you.
Try this. Okay. The conversation tonight has been all about the same. The money from Proposition H, it is needed to come back to the city, and then we can utilize that money a little better. We actually have been active in doing homeless work for years. We have a winter shelter at the Princess, a train station, and then it moved another time to the state, to the visiting center at the state, Priest's Detention Center. And now we've established it at the dryers, in the Dryer Room. So we're, the city's working good. The responsibility of affordable housing would be a priority, need to emphasize more affordable housing. When new developments come about, we can work and make contact with the individuals that are homeless, find out what their needs are. Cities talk about having their own public health department independent from LA County. And that came about in COVID, and that's something to look into, to see if we can fund there. Just bring more responsibility for teaching and educating the homeless to the need of the drugs, of the affordable housing.
Hey, Ms. Fraser? Do you want to use that wireless mic? Can you hear me? Oh, there we go. So housing is a human right. It baffles me that we seem to struggle to get that right. Everything that has been said, all the things that have been done or working on and whatnot, I'm not too sure about them because we have a young Manson at the end of this table that has poured his heart out to you tonight, and at several city council meetings, Cody Amor. He is homeless, and he's talked about how things are not, well, there's only 60 beds, and there's like 1,000-plus residents or homeless residents, 60,000 minus 60, that the, you know, math doesn't add up for me. We keep blaming mental health and all these other things. Yes, we need to partner with, with mental health workers and social workers, but it's not their fault. There's, you know, there's usually a life situation that has happened that can, that has led to where they are. So we as a community need to hold our council, you know, accountable in promoting more food and health services. We only have one shelter, Bridge to Home. The timing on the plans, I find questionable. We have an election coming up, all of a sudden the money is there, and then there's a plan, all of a sudden. But yet, there's people like Cody speaking to the council constantly, saying, "Where's all this money? Where's the promise? You bought the land, you know, we're just going to go sleep on the land?" You know, I do support, somebody mentioned the vacancy tax on landlords, that could be a thing. ADUs could be a possibility. We could do a safe parking program for those that are, that are actually living in their cars, maybe they could have a safe place to park. We could do conversion of vacant properties, those that are just sitting there and cost a million dollars that none of us can afford, we can transform those. Ultimately, apparently, there is a committee.
Let's leave the microphone down there. Next question, Seate. How do you think the city of Santa Clarita should assist with the growing fentanyl crisis in our area? What partnerships need to be built and/or continued to help mitigate this current situation?
I think the one thing that Mayor West and I can agree on is this is dangerous. It is very, very dangerous. Like she says, a very small amount, you can't even see it, and you die. One thing I heard recently, people complaining that it's coming from China and Mexico, and the solution is to close the borders, that couldn't be less true. That's just simply racist, let's put it that way. It's rich Americans that are bringing that in. We've always had an opioid crisis in America, it's well before I was alive. When I was in school, we had the DARE program, D-A-R-E, I'm not exactly sure what the letters stand for, and it was the Just Say No program. I think we can go a little bit beyond that and really almost get the parents involved. Again, Mayor West was talking about parents and speaking to your kids. This is where drugs tie into a mental health issue. Mental health is something very important on my agenda, and there's always, there's always a reason. You can't be afraid to speak to your children, you can't be afraid to step in because then you could wake up the next day and your child may not be there. I've seen it happen, I've seen it happen in my own family, and it's just a very scary thing. So one of the biggest things is to speak up. That is, I know it sounds like a simple solution, but speaking up can do wonders. Again, creating the DARE program and other programs, I think, can also be a solution. But when we're attending meetings and we're just blaming the border and other countries, I don't think that gets anywhere. That actually leads to further mental issues for those that are people of color and dealing with drug issues. They hear that, and might be no tomorrow for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser, your thoughts on dealing with the fentanyl crisis in Santa Clarita?
Yes, fentanyl is a problem, and we need to deal with it on two different directions. First is to educate and get the individuals that are addiction and the problems, try to help them with the education program. Sheriff Department has the DARE program. And so, education in the schools, education at other activities. The city has a very active youth program. We could work with the youth programs at the different facilities that we have and present educational programs there. The second way we need to deal with is the drugs coming in. We have a DA that we need to recall, but we've tried to recall him, and he didn't. He's very light on punishment towards those that provide the fentanyl. So we need to become more stronger in dealing with the dealers and let them know that they're not welcome here. So we just need to deal with it on both ends.
Thank you, Ms. Fraser. Ms. Thomas?
Thank you. Between 16 and 22 is the ages that are the highest risk for this crisis. All three of my daughters are between those ages. It absolutely starts at home to have that conversation. I had a daughter that moved into college today and had an orientation specifically on the fentanyl crisis, on the fact that it isn't just about addiction, it could be about a one-time use to stay up to take finals. It could be at a party, it could be in a situation, a social setting, and you have no idea that you've even been exposed to it. So the education starts at home, but extends into the relationships that your kids have. And of course, what is our community initiatives? How are we communicating that we are fighting this front collaboratively? There's guardians in our community, there are church organizations that are taking the lead on this. I think it has to have a complete united front, and personally and professionally, these are important issues for me that I would also take the lead on, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. West?
We all know about drugs, so let me just say this about this one. There are a lot of addictions to a lot of things. Every one of them almost can be treated, not this one. This one is deadly, it's 100 times stronger than any opiate out there. That drug is now in everything, Ativan. You buy a pill over the internet, they'll deliver it to you, and you don't know that you're taking fentanyl. My two friends lose their only child to fentanyl. It is the most deadly wave of poison to ever hit America, and this is a mom next to me, she knows. You've got to watch your kids, you've got to tell them, you've got to show them. There is no way to do this, parents, other than to tell the kids, you are at risk. The iPhone is the gateway to any kid in America getting these drugs. That's how they do it. They don't have drug pushers on the street, they don't need them. They just go on the iPhone, they order it up, they have no idea what they're taking into their body. Friend hands them a pill, says, "This will keep you awake for your finals," and boom, that couple of extra grades, they're dead. This drug has got to be stopped, it's got to be stopped here, it's got to be stopped now. We've lost 22 kids so far this year in this community. All they have to have is a few bucks and an iPhone. I'm terrified. This is the worst crisis we have ever seen with any substance in America. We got to do it, and we got to talk to each other. I know everybody says, "Oh, I don't want to talk about this." Yeah, we got to talk about it. We got to talk about it to the kids and our friends, everybody. Most parents find their child dead in their bedroom, in their bed. So ladies and gentlemen, it's a war, and we got to win this war.
Light?
I attended the press conference with Sheriff Philonueva, our congressman, and our local city leaders the other day to address the fentanyl crisis, and I learned a lot. You think you know, but you don't know. As the mayor said, your child's cell phone is, what Congressman Garcia said, is the super highway to death. If your children are using Snapchat, WhatsApp, or Instagram, they are ordering something that they think is X, and it's actually Y. And all of these drugs that they think that they're ordering to help them sleep, help them study, help them grow their muscles for the football team, are all laced with fentanyl, and they don't know it. And so what can we do? We need to be in the schools, educating teachers, we need to, there's a documentary. I suggest everybody in this room, watch Dead on Arrival, it's on YouTube. It's a 22-minute documentary that will make the hair on your arms stand up. It's real-life stories of parents who had stellar athletes, stellar students, who found their kids dead by touching or simply ingesting one pill of fentanyl. Like the mayor said, it's 100 times stronger than morphine. The sheriff has encouraged everybody, if you see something, say something. The people who are driving up to your homes to do a delivery to your kid, check out their car, check out their license plate. We need to stop them in their tracks, and that's how we do it. We have to get the word out and get into the schools and churches about how deadly this is, because I honestly, as a parent, you underestimate the power of it, and education is the key. It's getting the word out to every single person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Light. Mr. Miranda?
So I'm not going to repeat everything that was said because it was all good and very accurate, so thank you, everybody. But what I will say is, we have people here in Santa Clarita who are experts in fighting not only the drug crisis, but the fentanyl crisis, and they're all, most of them are in action drug rehab. And they're all, most of them are in action drug rehab over on Soladad by the Metro Lake Station over there. And Corey Quasham is doing God's work. He's been doing it for 40 years. He's an expert at fighting these things. And he says, "You were there and you were there, Mayor, you were there." He said, "This is a game changer in the world of drugs. This is a game changer." Remember that. What did he recommend? The Dead on Arrival video? There's another video, right? Two of them. But the Dead on Arrival video needs to be in every school. It needs to be seen by every student. It needs to be mandatory. Every student needs to see that video or certainly a video similar to that. In addition to that, listen carefully. Every parent needs to get involved. You need to get involved. So, Joe Messina of the Williams Hart District, he's one of the directors over there. He mentioned that they had a parents' night where they were going to talk about how to fight this. And they expected 500 parents, and they got 20 parents to attend. We need to get the word out. And whatever I do, whatever time I have left on the council, I've already started it on social media. I will constantly remind parents and children alike, this is a game changer and we need to do something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda.
Is this working?
Yeah.
This is good. Thank you so much. Okay, so we know what the problem is. How do we solve it? One of the things is get the drug dealers off the street. And let me just tell you, I was listening to the radio today and they were saying that a bill was just passed to take away the criminalization of drug dealers giving these drugs to our kids. That's crazy. And so, we need to stop the same people getting elected all the time that allows this stuff to happen. And that's in Sacramento. That's our DA. The other thing is, the city has been very involved in trying to get kids to learn about the drugs. We've had, first we had the DARE program and now we have the Defy program in which we go into schools and we educate the kids. And when the kids join these groups and they talk with their peers about the problem, we get results on that. You know, all of us in this room can help. There is a symposium happening on September 23 at City Hall. And I am pushing our city to make sure that we get the word out to all the businesses in order to have notices up in your businesses to tell the parents about this. The biggest problem, we were told by Gary Quasham and the sheriff and Mike Garcia and Joe Messina, is that parents are not aware that their kids can die from this stuff, the way they're getting this stuff. I sat next to a mom at the press conference who lost her son. She just went in to wake him up and he was dead. So, she obviously didn't know where he got it from. It's not her fault. She needs help. We need to be there to help our community, to spread the word. That's the biggest thing that we were told at that press conference. Have to educate our parents and we can all help to do that.
So, I'm homeless. I know a lot of people. I haven't seen anyone pass away due to fentanyl overdose myself, but I know a lot of people who have, okay? I know a lot of people who are addicted to meth. I know, I know a lot of people who are struggling through addictions. And we have to do a couple of things. First, we need to restructure how we educate. The drug wars, many of you know, has been just this, it's education, but it's telling people, "Say no to drugs," and that's it. And, you know, kids will go on their iPhones and do their own research, right? And they'll look up, you know, what is weed? What is meth? What is heroin or whatever they look up? And they get their education elsewhere. And so, I think we need to restructure how we teach kids. I think we need to just be honest with them. Tell them what each, what the drugs do, how dangerous they are. And I think we also need to legalize and regulate the proper drugs, okay? So, I think weed specifically and magic mushrooms are two specific drugs that I think we can legalize and regulate because there should be nobody dying of those two drugs based on, because there's fentanyl put in their weed or fentanyl put in their magic mushrooms or whatever it is. There are certain drugs that we can get out of the black market so that there's no fentanyl in that aspect of the black market. And with the black market itself, how do you address fentanyl? Honestly, I do think we need to figure out where the drugs are coming from. I will say that, you know, the FDA is the one who started this whole opioid crisis to begin with. They approved the, you know, opioids to begin with. And so, you know, it's, you should, you should really question your trust you have with your government and your politicians when they say they want to get drugs off the streets.
You may not like my answer to this particular problem. We certainly need to educate everyone. We certainly need to treat everyone. And we certainly need to have rehabilitation facilities for everyone. But we have been waging a war on drugs for 400 years. We've used law and order tactics on getting drugs out of people's hands for 400 years. And the only thing that's gotten us either, is either the same rhetoric over and over for the next batch of drugs, or things getting worse and worse and worse. The war on drugs is a failed policy. And using law and order tactics is not how you get kids off drugs. How you do it is you divert all that incredible amount of law and order war on drugs money that you have into education. Right now, I can tell you as elected school board member, our school districts are completely underfunded. If you're going to give school districts an unfunded mandate, it's going to be very hard for them to take it up. So, we have a very large source of finances that is being misused right now on a product that it doesn't apply to, which is drugs. We need to divert that money into education, treatment, and rehabilitation. And we need to change our perspective. This is a perspective change as Americans. We have to stop thinking about getting out of the problem of drugs through waging war on it because kids don't buy that stuff. They're too smart. And we need to get the law and order mentality out of defeating the drug problem. Yes, there is a drug problem. I was around drugs my entire life. I never took one. And it's, I'll just tell you what it takes. It takes love. That's how you keep people from taking drugs.
Post-COVID, there are countless empty storefronts in Santa Clarita, here in the state of Santa Clarita. What should the city be doing to help fill those spaces with retailers and as such, increase tax revenues for the city?
The first thing we should do is define the difference between small business and microbusiness. Small businesses are businesses with up to 1,500 employees and who do gross revenue of up to $40 million a year, okay? So, our city has mostly been focused on helping small to medium-sized businesses flourish. And very unfortunately, they've helped the large international conglomerates flourish in town. And that's the main reason why our micro-business mom-and-pop brick-and-order shops can't compete. They can't compete with the Walmarts and the Samsungs. When's the last time you saw a small mom-and-pop hardware store? Remember the Ace Hardware's? When's the last time you saw one of those? They have been taken over by the Home Depots and the Walmarts. And that is what's devastating our mom-and-pop shops. We need a change in perspective in governance that supports micro-businesses, mom-and-pop shops, over these large conglomerates. And that's how we get small businesses to flourish, to go from a one person who owns the business, hiring three employees, then opening up a second store, hiring four more employees. And guess what? Those employees will be much higher paid than the employees who work for minimum wage, sometimes less, at these large conglomerates. And that's, in fact, how you defeat inflation, by creating well-paying jobs through micro-businesses, mom-and-pop shops, and stop supporting these large international conglomerates in their communities. Yes, they can come in, but we don't give them incentives. We make it easy for the small mom-and-pops to survive. And we take regulation, overdue regulation, and overdue taxes off their backs so they can compete fairly with the large corporations, the large international conglomerates. And that's how you defeat these things.
So, we're in very unprecedented times. The rent went up 33% the last year. I want you to really think about that for a second, right? 33% the last year. If it does it again, all households throughout the, throughout the city is going to have to, you know, get more jobs. And we can't just keep doing this every year where another member of the family has to get another job and so they don't get evicted. Meanwhile, there are tons of empty properties. There are over 2,000 vacant properties. There's over 1.3 million square foot of empty commercial spaces. And the reason why this is, because the landlords will not reduce their rent. They will not reduce their rent. They could fill their empty properties if they lowered their rent enough to where someone would be willing to pay for that. That's how capitalism is supposed to work, I thought. But, you know, that's not happening. And we have to accept that. We need to do something about that. And I think a vacancy tax is the best way to let everyone know a vacancy tax is a property tax, but it only applies to landlords who fail to utilize their properties. So, if you have an empty property and it's just sitting there, you're a bad investor. I'm sorry. You don't know how to use your property. You don't know how to manage your assets well. You need to be, there needs to be a financial disincentive for that landlord so that they can, you know, fill their empty houses or their empty apartment buildings or their empty hotel rooms. I went to the hotel, the Santa Clarita Hotel, just a few weeks ago and it was almost empty. Meanwhile, all, there's homeless people living on the streets. This is unacceptable and we just need to reorganize a little bit and change the incentive structures so we can fill the empty houses and we can solve homelessness.
Yes, it is totally obvious to all of us that post-COVID, we have a real problem. But what we had was a real problem when the county and all of those entities shut down our economy and made it impossible for our businesses to continue to make the money they needed to pay the rent and to conduct their businesses. My husband and I own a business. We used to have tons of employees. We've been slowly cutting down our business. But we're one of those mom-and-pops. We don't have any employees. And yet, we've lost over two-thirds of our business for all the businesses that could not stay open because of the regulations and because of what was happening in shutting down our economy. We tried to tell the county, "One size does not fit all." Our area is not having as many cases as other areas. And leave us alone. Let us conduct our businesses. What we did as a city is we allowed our businesses to expand on outside, onto sidewalks. We set it up so that they could do that. And we allowed them to conduct business outside so that at least some of them could stay in business. I feel really terrible for those that, businesses that are now empty, those small businesses, because of what, not the city, but the county and the state did to our businesses to make it impossible for them to conduct their business. It's ridiculous. So, what we're doing is we're trying very hard to do whatever we can as a city to make sure that any business that still exists is not in danger of losing their business. You know, landlords were, can't be all at fault because what happened is, the rules that were set up didn't allow them to collect any rent. So, how are they going to keep in business?
So, there are a few rules of economics that come into play. Number one, there's a law of supply and demand. So, if you have a business and your business can't make it in today's environment, you have to ask yourself, "Am I the right business at the right time? Am I doing the right things to meet the needs of today's population?" And if you're not, you need to change your business. At least make a modest change and probably make a major change to your business. Well, the question really is, what's the city going to do to help? What's the city doing to help? And I look at Main Street and I see a lot of new businesses. I see a lot of new restaurants. I see a lot of new retail shops. I see New Hope Crossings is almost full. I see Harton Main is a new event center that's on Main Street. We're looking at the southern side of Main Street by the circle. And we're looking at eventually to develop that into a very, very exciting and arts and entertainment district with lots of retail, residents, and some events. And parking, a parking structure, absolutely. And so, we're doing a lot of things. But the most important things that we're doing here in Santa Clarita, we've been doing for a lot of years, and that's, we have a business-friendly environment. We don't tax businesses every step of the way like most other cities do. We don't have a business tax in Santa Clarita, for United Out. We're the only cities probably across the country that don't have a business tax. So, we've been doing a lot. We will continue to do a lot. And yes, nobody likes to see businesses go under. But on the other hand, I've been in business all my life. I've seen many businesses go under, including businesses like Montgomery Ward and others, okay?
Thank you. Ms. Mike, do you want that one or?
I believe the question was, "What should the city be doing to help these businesses?" Not what happened or what's going on, but what specifically should the city be doing to help people come back to the city? First of all, the Economic Development Corporation publicizes an incentives/resource guide which explains on all levels of government what types of tax credits and incentives that there are for businesses. And as a city, we should be promoting that guide and encouraging people and businesses to take a look at that guide. Because when you go through it, there's a ton of federal, state, and local resources that will help bring businesses back to our city. Here at COC, we have America's Job Center where employers come to receive assistance with training their workforce, getting started. What an amazing program for the college to have here. And the city could be publicizing that on a much broader, more prolific level as an attractant to employers to come here to set up jobs. The city could also be offering grants to new businesses that could be forgiven if certain thresholds are met. Hey, come to our city. If you meet X amount of sales or have X amount of employees at your business, we will forgive your grant at three years. There could be grants where there's thresholds to be met to attract more businesses. I've heard that the permit approval process here in the city is rather slow. The city could expedite the permit process to get businesses to want to come here. So, there's all kinds of things that we can be doing to attract businesses, to give them a financial incentive to come here. Because Mr. Miranda is right. We are an attractive valley, but we need to get our hands out there and tell everybody what the incentives are.
Thank you very much. Mr. West?
Thank you very much. I don't need to tell everybody that COVID changed the world. It changed how we treat our kids. It changed how we purchase. It changed how we work. It has literally turned society upside down. We've done everything we can to support the businesses and yes, we have lost some. I believe it's true, what Denise White said. I believe we could expedite the bidding process and I believe that could... And I believe there could be some incentives. We strongly support the chamber and we certainly promote and strongly support the Economic Development Corporation because it's really important to have strong businesses and to assist them. And we're doing that. I will tell you, Old Town New Hall is doing phenomenally well. And you, yes, you see shopping centers sitting vacant. They got things sitting vacant around there. Some of that is because people now acquire their goods and services differently. And they may not ever go back. We don't know that yet. We're not completely out of this drama that we've had for a couple of years. But I would say that some of those centers are going to end up becoming residential properties. And, and that may be a good thing because it will put people living where they can get to services and walk and shop and enjoy and be close. And that's a pretty easy thing to do. And that discussion is going on now. I will tell you, I don't want to see any businesses lost. I can also tell you, I can't take your tax dollars and just hand them over to people. They have to go through specific progress on what they're doing.
I think mine's two-pronged in that it's centered around business, the lifeblood of our community. So my first priority would be to develop the business coalition. That's what I would like to see. And that would then enhance the recovery to small business, but also then bring big business here. I think we have been that kind of enclave that people are looking at for the future, from technology to biomedication. There's a lot of opportunity for our community to evolve into that center point even for the studios. So I would want everything to be centered around the recovery of small business and to bring big business here.
Well, I think that the most important thing to do is enhance public safety or have the bad. That's going to include stopping fentanyl from killing our kids. But if you don't have public safety, you can't enhance the business economy. The businesses can't function when you can walk in the store, break the cases, snatch and grab, and take hundreds of thousands of dollars of merchandise out the door with no consequence. And it's a battle with getting law enforcement because LA County is not training them. There are not enough officers. And, and we need to develop a program to figure out how we as a city are going to get these officers trained. This is a big challenge. We've never had this before. This is because of COVID, is because of the changes that have happened all over the country. And we're feeling it in Santa Clarita. We're blessed. We are, we are isolated. We've got a big green belt around us. We're very community minded. We're, we're a community that helps each other. But you need to have law enforcement that's strong so your business economy can survive. Hey, if you're homeless and there's no good economy, you're not going to get a job. So it all trickles down to how we are able to function as a community.